March 4th, 2025, meeting agenda. Staff, any additions?
Yes, thank you, Mayor, and members of the council. I've got two quick additions. The first one would be the license list for consent item O. It was provided to the council earlier in an email, and I have that printed list, too, so just addition of that. The other would be the addition to other business item 11A as the voucher disbursement report. It's printed in front of you tonight, and the council also received that earlier today in an email. So those are the two additions that I'm including for tonight's agenda.
Counsel, anything to add to the agenda?
Mr. Mayor, I move that we approve tonight's agenda.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no or nay. Moving on. Next item here is the consent agenda. So pursuant to council rules, one motion, non-debatable, will approve the recommendation noted. Any member of the council may ask for an item to be taken from the consent agenda for discussion in separate action. Such items removed from the consent agenda shall be considered immediately following approval of the balance of the consent agenda. Staff, any changes to the consent agenda? Councilmember President?
Thank you. I'd like to withdraw items M and N, please.
All right, items M and N. Anybody else? Nope, all right.
I will make a motion to approve the balance of the agenda, consent agenda, excuse me, items A through L and item O.
Second.
All right, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say no or nay. All right, what did we approve? So, it's a mouthful tonight. Items A through F are all approving city council meeting minutes and starting in order from December 3rd, December 17th, December 7th, I'm sorry, January 7th, January 21st, February 4th, and February 18th. Items G and H are approving city council work session minutes from January 14th and February 11th. Item I is approving city council 2025 top goals and priorities meeting minutes from February 24th, 2025. Item J is approving the city council work session meeting minutes from February 24th, 2025. Item K is receiving sustainability committee minutes from committee meeting minutes from January 15th, 2025. L is receiving planning commission minutes, meeting minutes of January 16th, 2025. And item O is approval of licenses. So we're moving on to discuss item M, correct?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I removed a couple of these items as there's some exciting grant opportunities, so I wanted to remove them and highlight and thank the staff for their work for submitting these grants. So both of them involve the twins organizations, or both, the twins organization for two different grants. One of them is for equipment kit, and another one is for coaching opportunities. And one thing that I wanted to especially highlight and thank our staff for, it looks like we were made aware of these grants on February 20th, and the deadline for that grant was on the 21st. So kudos to the team for putting together those grant applications so swiftly, and looking forward to seeing the outcome of these, but I think they'll really benefit some of our recreation and sporting programs. So unless there are other comments with that, I would like to move that the council support and accept these funds if they are awarded to us for both items M and N on the consent agenda.
Second.
Excellent. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say no or nay. Moving on, right. So next, we have presentations for Republic Services of the Twin Cities.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. As you're aware, and hopefully the members of the audience and viewers watching are aware, we are transitioning our refuse hauling services to Republic Services of the Twin Cities. They were generous enough to come out tonight to give an overview of the Republic experience, I guess. So we have two representatives, Bev and Frances, to go over that with you tonight. And I'll transition the video to their presentation right now.
Thank you so much for the opportunity to come out this evening to meet you all. We're super excited about the transition that's going to take place here very soon in Robinsdale. I'm Bev Metisun, and I'm the municipal sales manager here with Republic Services. And I get the, I have the opportunity of working with over 20 different municipalities. And I've had the opportunity to work with Tim when he was at Badness Heights. And working with your staff has just been wonderful as we're setting ourselves up for a successful transition. So I want to thank you for that. I brought a member of my team, my MVP, here. And so I'm going to let Frances introduce herself to you.
Hello, I'm Frances Estrella. I'm the municipal administrator, as Bev said. I have been with Republic for 15 years. I have, I started my career in customer service, all the way up to billing coordinator, and now the municipal administrator. So I have a lot of expertise in a couple of different areas, so I can definitely help this city in any way possible. We have a great team behind, behind me that helps me with any questions the city might have or residents have. So we're always there to make sure we're answering questions in a timely manner for you guys. Thank you.
Thanks.
So we wanted to take just a little bit of time today to introduce ourselves and tell you a little bit about who we are and what we do. For Republic Services, we've really changed who we are. We used to be, years ago, a hauler. Things have changed drastically from that, from that point. We're now really offering a lot of different environmental services and transitioned into an environmental solutions company. Our vision is partnering with customers to create a more sustainable world. And our promise to you is we really do put sustainability in action. Our commitment is to provide exceptional service and expertise while protecting our environment. The first thing I want to touch on with you is the customer experience. Giving our customers the best of experience is what Frances and I focus on each and every day, along with our teams. So here's just a list of something, of how we operate. We have a highly trained customer service team. A lot of them have a very long tenure with us. What we did a couple of years ago is, as you know, we are a national company. You'll see us in every state. We are, we have multiple divisions, local people working, doing great things in our community. What we did is we, what we did is change our customer service team up a little bit. We realized that Minnesota is just a little bit different in how we operate, from taxes to even with the introduction of organics recycling. In some parts of the country, some cities don't even offer recycling, believe it or not. And so what we did is we formed a team. We've got about 12 Minnesota residents that provide service to Minnesota customers. And it's been really well-received. Those folks are, they report to their supervisor in Delano, Minnesota. And our call centers open Monday through Friday, normal business hours, and then on Saturdays for a few hours. We know that we've got to serve those folks that are out and about during the week and, you know, busy working. We do provide a lot of education to our cities. A lot has gone to digital these days, but that's something that we really enjoy. And Frances here, she's really good at it. We have a new feature right now, too. We're just rolling out Track My Truck where residents can go in. And we are encouraging residents to go to our website once we begin service and register online. When you do so, you can get service alerts should there be a weather delay, should there be a change in service during a holiday week. But then also you can track my truck. You can go in and say, okay, let's see. If you don't have a Ring camera out front, let's see, has the truck been by yet today? Especially if you're a bit concerned. Our local team, we've got our local team that is servicing Robinsdale will be the Blaine Division. Myself and Frances support that division, along with a few others. And what we've done already is we've set up a personalized inbox for your residents. So once service starts, should they have a question, we're giving them multiple options on how do you contact us. This is real popular with our residents. Those who don't want, don't wish to make a call and would rather send an email that will go directly to our local team, we get back to them in 24 hours or less. And then the city staff also has a designated inbox for us. Should they receive any type of a concern or escalation from a resident, they can send that directly to our inbox, and we have a team that takes care of those. They're in that inbox all day long, checking and communicating back with quick responses. And then also, our drivers live and work. Our tenure in the Blaine Division is about 15 years for our drivers, so we have a lot of experience. One thing that we're very committed to is elevating that customer experience. We do give our residents the option to take a survey should they call our customer service team. Overall, our net promoter score on those surveys are 4.7 out of 5. We're very proud of that. And of course, a first, you know, first contact resolution also is very important. I also have listed some other things here that you can read through in terms of how we handle customer escalations, our overall call handling. One thing that we added this year was we invested in AI. The reason that we did that, and Chase, I'll let you advance to the next slide. The reason that we did that is so that we can provide, we can provide very timely coaching. Every, every single call is scored, and in the next slide, I'm going to walk you through what that looks like. But what happens when somebody calls Republic Services? First of all, customer calls, it goes into our system to identify where is this customer calling from. If it's Midwest, then the next, the next sequence would be, is that Minnesota? Or is that one of our other states, Iowa, Illinois, Wisconsin? And so you can see how this is routed. If it's Minnesota, then it will go, if your city's in Minnesota, you'll go to a Minnesota pod. That's the pod I was telling you about in Delano there. And we do have a team that does take residential and commercial calls. If that, if there is, if there are calls in queue, we don't want those customers waiting. So that call will quickly revert to our Midwest pod where the agents are active and ready to take their call. What that does is it reduces that time of, you know, that time you have to sit and wait to get a rap. None of us enjoy that experience. So this flows very quickly. I will say that if you, if our residents don't get someone in the Minnesota pod, the Midwest pod, along with two other call center areas, one in North Carolina, one in Arizona, what happens is that phone number, we can tell by the phone number and where the call's coming from, they will get a knowledge tool that pops up and gives all that contractual information so that they can quickly see, if the customer has a question, here's how they bill. Here are the services, here are the service, excuse me, service days. And so it's, it's really remarkable, the systems and the technology that we have today. This, the, we've got a lot of different reports that we could pull in, customer service. I want to highlight on this slide that what we're looking at are behavioral insights. How does our customer feel when they call in? So the scoring for our, each call is based on our agent's tone, empathy. And then are they listening and asking the right questions? And, and also acknowledging the customer. We have some cities that have been with us for decades. So we have a lot of longevity. We have some customers, like some of our Roseville, Robinsdale folks, that are brand new. So acknowledge the fact that, wow, it's really wonderful to talk to somebody, you know, from Robinsdale. We welcome you. How can I help you today? And make sure that we resolve whatever concern they have right away. On occasion, there might be something, some very odd request that comes through. In that case, that representative will get in touch with us locally so that we can get back to that resident promptly. So how does this work? On the right side, you can see all the behavioral traits we're looking for out of our agents. We really want them to own each and every call that they have with your resident. And we also, like I said, we want to build rapport with them. We, we look at this as a partnership and a long, a long-term relationship. And so we have a number of dashboards. If at all, we receive a concern from city staff that a resident feels, gosh, I don't feel like I was treated very well, we'll have the call pulled, we'll listen to it, and provide any necessary coaching. Again, here's another list with some more definitions, some more, you know, just a little bit deeper dive into the different areas that we're looking to always improve on all of our customer service calls. The top four are starred. Reason being is they're all very important, but in this first year that we're utilizing this software, we're really honing in on those four. And then from there, we're also coaching on everything else. But I think this is a wonderful model, and we've seen customer service are, NP, I should not, should not use acronyms. Our surveys are more favorable. They are enjoying the experience. Next piece is near and dear to my heart, and that's sustainability and environmental responsibility here at Republic Services. This is an exciting slide. We are leaders when it comes to EV, and we've trialed a number of different municipalities in 2024, a number of markets with our EV trucks. And I've got them listed here. You can see, when you look at these areas and cities and states, it's a little bit more moderate weather cities here. And the, the pilots have gone real well, and cities are getting really excited about EV. We had a very big announcement this last fall, and Louisville, Colorado went full EV, and it's working really well. We are excited to say that sometime in 2025, we are going to have, also bring some EVs here to Minnesota to give a test. We know that our weather can be a bit extreme, but as the technology continues to improve, I think we'll have more and more success. We've all heard about plastics and how plastics are, are polluting our environment. They're in our oceans. It's everywhere. We, at Republic Services, for the longest time, have, have recycled our plastic. We've have multiple buyers that buy that plastic and make new product out of it. What we wanted to do is make sure that the majority of our product was not being made into textiles and shoes and carpet. We really wanted it to be recycled and reused as recyclable materials. So you can see in this diagram, I like this diagram because it shows, we pick up the, you know, we, we pick up the recycling, we sort it, we take the, the plastic is then bundled. So are the other materials separately. We take that. What we'll be able to do at our polymer center now, we take those bales, we transport them to the polymer center where they're washed, made into flakes, then go to Blue Polymers where then it's made into new packaging. Nestle, Coca-Cola, a lot of these large companies have made commitments to their shareholders and to the public saying, we will recycle our material, and our pop bottles and water bottles are made of this certain percentage of recycled material. So there are big commitments out there, and so we've really, really partnered with them because we have a lot of material. We have a lot of good, clean material. And I'm excited to tell you that our, in our Midwest Polymer Center is going to open up sometime this month. What that will mean for us here in Robinsdale, not sure yet in terms of when we'll start being able to transport material to that facility. But when we get closer to that, I will be sure to update you. So super excited about that. That is our second polymer center, and we are planning number three and four, and those locations will be released very soon. PFAS, we hear a lot about that on the news. And I just selected this piece, this slide, to let you know that you see us, you'll see us every day on your city street, and we're busy collecting all of the material, the residential material, but we do far more than that, as you can see, with the EV, with the polymer centers, but also with PFAS. We're involved with several projects there. So this slide just gives you a glimpse of what we're doing in that space as well because it is really important. And so I just wanted to let you know that there are multiple other different spaces that you'll see Republic Services in. And if ever interested, I would invite you to see, to go to our website, republicservices.com, and look at our sustainability report. It's, it's amazing at what all we're involved in. With that, I want to thank you again for entrusting us to be your new hauler. I know that you have had service. You haven't had a service change for decades. And if ever there's a question, certainly go to staff. You can reach out to myself. I've got my, my email address there. You certainly can call me as well. Whatever you need, we're there to make sure that, that we're here to support you and your residents. Any questions or no questions today? I'm not sure.
Staff, any questions?
No, thank you. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you to you both for presenting tonight. So I kind of have a couple question, well, three, I think, it's specific. So customer service, phone calls. So if I'm understanding correctly, if residents have concerns, they should reach out to Republic directly. Our previous hauler kind of had this, you know, residents would come by and they would talk about this kind of circle of communication. City would tell them to talk to waste management, waste management would tell them to talk to the city, and would just kind of be stuck in a loop sometimes. So can you just clarify that, like, if I have a problem, I should just reach out to Republic directly?
Yes, in fact, we've got a welcome letter that's going out. We're just on the final draft right now, working with Chase on that, and I'm sure he can, can send that out to all of you. Letting residents know, who do you call about this? Who do you call about that? There are some items that they need to call the city. When it comes to a missed pickup, something like that, they need to contact us. And so we've got a nice informational brochure, two-sided, with that type of information. I know the city's also posted a really nice FAQ and a lot of information on the website, and I believe a mailing or two or more. And we always welcome residents to reach us. If it is, you know, if it is definitely something that the city has to handle, we do. We will tell them to, you know, see the city. But again, on our knowledge tool, all of that information is in front of every agent. As soon as they pull up that name, that address, or our system identifies that this is a resident here of Robinsdale, that knowledge tool does appear in front of them, telling them, you can, you, you must handle these things, the city must handle these things.
Sure.
If in doubt, you know, we have multiple ways for the, for the residents to reach us. They can either call, they can email our local team, robinsdale@republicservices.com. And they can also register, they can download the app or register on our online tool. And so there's chats available. There's a number of ways they can communicate with us.
Great. That was great to hear, all those different forms of communication that can be used. And then I had a couple of questions just about recycling. So do you know which number, like the recyclable, like the plastic number, like 1 through 7, which one we're able to collect here? And then also that plastic recycling service that you were mentioning, do you foresee that kind of reselling those treated pellets back to other companies? Do you think that could help offset costs for residents in the future? Or what is kind of the vision with that from a standpoint of like, you know, since we're kind of providing all the plastic to be used, if that can be, you know, benefit the, the cost of this in any way?
And there is some legislation going on about that right now. I won't get into that this evening because that's a whole topic for another time. But so, and that might be more appropriate for a workshop. However, with recycling, restate the last.
Yeah, there's like the type of plastic.
The type of plastics, yes. They're your typical, we've got the, all the education. It's the same plastics that you, that you recycle today, your milk jug, jugs, you know, your laundry soap jugs. What else? Water bottles, pop bottles, your aluminum, all of that. You know, the numbers really don't, all the numbers do is tell us what material it is. When you say 1 through 7, that's kind of, a number 6 would be known to most people as Styrofoam. Is that recyclable? Technically, yes. But in curbside recycling, no. So what we do is we follow the same guidelines as you will see in most of the metropolitan, if not all of the metropolitan cities. We're all part of an association. We meet with municipalities, the county, MPCA, to harmonize that messaging about what can go inside the recycling. So no big changes there.
Okay, great. Thank you for explaining that. That was very helpful.
Yeah, you're so welcome.
Yep, thanks.
Other questions?
I had a couple of questions.
Councilmember Greenberg?
Thank you, and thank you for presenting tonight and being here. On, so you talked about the, the facilities in Indianapolis where you're, you know, you're making this into pellets that can be then reused to make other plastics. If we're recycling today and that facility is not available to us yet, or like what happens with the plastics that we're recycling now? You pick them up and where, what happens?
We have, we're a large company. We have multiple buyers, which is great. We don't want to store material. We want to get it out to be recycled. Some of the material, and I, I don't know what the percentage is, the majority of it goes into new product. However, there is a certain amount of it that is purchased by some buyers who, I mean, I've got Rothie's Shoes, and that's made out of all the recyclable plastic. I've got a couple of shirts that are made out of recycled plastic. So with the polymer center, what we're doing is reducing that down cycle. Because once it's been made into a textile, a shoe, something like that, it's no longer recycled material, material. Therefore, the majority, the vast majority of it is recycled into new packaging, let's call it.
Okay. So it's still being recycled, it just could be going to a lot of different places, whereas with the polymer center, it's being made into bottles that can then be recycled and reused and it's more of a cycle.
Yes, like right now, a can, let's say a can of Diet Coke. I probably have one a day. But with that, I throw it in the recycle bin and it's going to be recycled into another can. And it goes on and on and on. It's recycled many, many, many times. With, with the plastic, we want the same thing for that. And so, less downcycling, more recycling.
Got it. Okay, thank you.
And we want control there.
Yeah, no, that's really helpful. I appreciate that.
You know, we want more control there and hence that's why we've made these large investments in our own polymer centers.
Great. Another question I had just around communication, you said that there's going to be a mailer going out and I know there's communication coming from the city as well and that we'll be able to, once we make the transition, that we'll be able to sign up on the website. Are there, is there ongoing communication that goes back and forth as far as like, how do you communicate with customers and would someone need to be signed up on?
You know, it's a great question. That's actually a really great question. First of all, the flyer that we have, we want to make sure that people don't go to the mailbox, grab the envelope, but a lot of our mail ends up just going into the recycle bin before it's opened, right? So what we're doing is with our flyer, we're using, we're, we are attaching it to the cart at the time of delivery. It's two-sided and that's, it's very instructional. Then also, people can sign up for alerts. We also have a website strictly about how to recycle and recycle right. And so, for you, and you can get on that website through recycle, you know, through republicservices.com. Then we also send, and we've actually had the pleasure of working with your communication specialist already, and so we've got a bunch of things that we will be sending out digitally, again, educational pieces. And Francis generally heads most of that up, even down to the point where we've got social media posts that we'll provide to the city about, "Remember, we've got a holiday coming up. What does that mean? The holiday's on Monday. Everybody's service is backed up by one day." So, we really try to take on as much of that responsibility in our partnership with the city.
Yep.
We'll be providing that about once a quarter is what we usually like to send the city.
Okay.
Couple of education pieces to put, you know, via social media, on your city website, things like that, so.
Great.
They'll get a lot of education.
And once a year, we do an audit. We actually will have our truck go to our recycling center. They'll dump on a special tip floor, take a great big scoop of it and it's manually sorted so that we know what the composition is. And with that, what is the contamination? What trash are we seeing in that sample? Then that helps us customize recycling education for your city too.
Great. Thank you.
Yeah.
One last question that I had just around, we have a lot of events that happen in Robinsdale and I know you're new to working with us, but it would be great to have you come and visit and, you know, be part of Whizbang Days or our Chamber of Commerce meet and greet. I don't know if that's something that you get involved with here locally, but that would be amazing.
Send us an invite, please. Yeah, send us an invite and if we're able to make the event, by all means, we'd love to join you. We're out in the community a lot. We, even, you know, we have some touch a truck events such as, you know, all over. I would say, give us as much advance as possible.
Okay.
Because we really do try our hardest to get out to as many events as we can and both Francis and I, we're so passionate about recycling education. It's, it's what we like to do.
Great. Thank you.
Yes, Councilmember Parisian.
Thank you. Thank you for your presentation tonight, both of you. Really appreciate all the great information. Also, it's very clear that you're passionate about customer service and sustainability and those are two things that were high up on our wish list when we were seeking out your services. So, a couple of questions and the first one might be more directed to staff with our current provider, but we have a sticker system that I understand is no longer going to be effective with the, with the new hauler. So, to clarify, that ends at the end of this month, is that correct, the sticker program?
Yeah, thank you, Councilmember Parisian. We have messaged that it will be expiring at the end of this month and encourage residents, if they do have stickers, to try to do, you know, some early spring cleaning if they can to get rid of those stickers. I know sometimes people have bought in advance for, you know, preparation for the year. So, you know, we encourage them to do that, but certainly let us know if that date comes and you still have stickers, we can see what we can maybe do, but encouraging people to do that. And then, you know, I would say to you, I've seen a lot of people on like Facebook Marketplace, like I can give you some stickers or if you want to buy my stickers. And I think that's been a great suggestion I've seen too, for residents to build their community through that.
Thank you for clarifying that. Yes, I am one of those people that has a couple of those stickers stashed away. So, if anything, that's just a reminder for folks listening, use up your stickers. You've got a few weeks left to do it. And then another question in terms of the bin transition, is there anything that residents need to do during that transition to, for example, if I've got two bins of a particular size, is that going to happen automatically where I'm going to get two new bins of the same size?
That's a great question. I'm glad you asked it. We do have a list. We don't know if it's 100% accurate. Whatever is on our list, we will be delivering.
Perfect.
If it's not 100%, and let's say you have two bins instead of one, then we'll, once we get through the initial deployment, then what we'll do is we'll start putting a list together to say, okay, we need to get some, especially with recycling, we need to get out some extra bins.
Thank you. And then, oh, I'm sorry.
I was just gonna add to that point too. I think that was, we've talked about the expectation of that happening too. So, we're all kind of prepared, including our front desk staff that handles a lot of those calls, to handle those and prepare for those. You know, sometimes even a resident doesn't know the exact size they had and they're being billed for and so those lists, like Bev said, aren't always 100%, but we'll try to mitigate and obviously help with any resident that, you know, calls us for that, that switch or that mistake in their bin sizes, so.
Wonderful. Thank you.
And I did want to also say, sometimes those bins vary a little bit. They might be the same, it might hold the same number of gallons of waste. Some are shorter, some are wider, some are taller and more narrow. So, that all, the image of them is a bit different depending on who the manufacturer is.
Okay. Now that you bring that up, I have another question. If I don't know the size of my bin, is it indicated somewhere on the bin itself?
It may be. It may be on the inside of the lid. You might have to look for it.
Yeah, I've never looked.
It might be embedded as part of a code on the bin, but I'll bet you'll know by looking at your bill.
That is true. Okay, and then one more, not a question, but more of an ask. I personally would love to hear more about the EV program once it rolls out in Minnesota. So, in a year or so after the program exists, please do update us on, on how that's going because I would be eager to hear.
I'll be happy to. Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilmember Blacklight.
Yes. I just want to say thank you so much for the presentation. Great deal of knowledge that you shared with us today and I just want to say thank to the city for the information that's been posted on the website as well. I would, I think when I seen it at the website, as we were sitting here earlier prior, and it's very thorough in many respects. So, thank you for that. And I would encourage residents and our neighbors to get out and check it out. If you're really curious or interested, like you're doing a lot of really cool things that I was not aware of and thank you for that and this disinformation tonight. It's going to be a great spirit for everybody, knowing that there's going to be some transition and change. So I just want to continue to acknowledge that and encourage our residents and our, our communities to be mindful, bear with us and bear with the team. So, thank you for that.
Well, thank you.
Yeah, I'll just cap it off with, there's a lot of change anxiety going on, so.
Understood.
And, you know, hats off to staff for the communications that are going out as well. I'm happy to hear that you've got newsletters and you're, you're getting out ahead of the change. Clearly, you guys take customer serious, or customer service very seriously and that will be a nice, refreshing experience we'll all have. So, I'm really impressed with the level of technology you're investing in and I, maybe it didn't go unnoticed, but I definitely noticed that and that's expensive to do. And it's, I'm hopeful it shows up on the, on the phone. So, thank you for that. Also, the date is July 13th. That's the Whizbang Parade, so go ahead and get a truck ready and we'll see.
Okay.
Thank you.
To address the events happening, staff is compiling a list of all the events that we will send to Republic throughout the year. So, we will have a detailed list of the events that I know that we talked about partnering with them already on. So, but I appreciate the council wanting to see them out in the community too, so.
Great. We're excited to have you.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you so much. Have a good evening.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
Okay. Public hearings, there are none. Next item is old business, none. Onto new business. Consider a resolution approving code variance for 3819 West Broadway, which I believe will be the site for US Internet.
Yes. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. My name is Heather Rand. I'm the Community Development Director for the City of Robinsdale. Bringing this up. Great. Counselors, you probably noticed in your packet, you have this item and then the next item on your agenda, they're companion pieces in that they both pertain to the same parcel, a property, 3819 West Broadway, and they both pertain to the same company who hopes to own this property very, very soon and conduct some business and that's US Internet. So, with that, I'd like to launch first then into this variance PowerPoint. Get this going. There we go. Counselors, I want you to know that the applicant, US Internet, submitted their application. You have the complete application in your packet. And in fact, you probably thought staff was being a little nutty in that this and the item after this, it's like a multiple, maybe 70-page application. We typically, as staff, wouldn't probably include all of that background material, but we figured this time we've kind of erred on the side of caution in that some of those background materials in your packet pertain to a generator. We wanted to really let you know because you may have some questions. This internet, this is really for a data center or a public utility building. They take very serious US Internet, providing fiber internet service that has backup. Should there be inclement weather or some reason that the power goes down, then that generator would be utilized. And we wanted you to see in your packet the information and the bottom line is that it will be less than 70 decibels when operated, which is within city code, and we will be testing for that before they are given their certificate of occupancy. So, a little background, if you're wondering why all that information on the generator, we just thought a couple of you might be curious about that. So, that's what that was all about. Getting back to a variance then, as these folks looked at the property and currently the Women's Health Center building is located on the property, has been for many years in Robinsdale. I believe it's been shuttered as of the end of January, but correct me if I'm wrong, I think there's still perhaps some staff there pending this action tonight. But what we are anticipating is with this variance that's required, then we'll have a new building that's constructed on the site. The old building will be demolished. The timeframe for that, as I understand, is sometime third quarter of 2025, if you approve the variance, and then the next item is conditional use permit for this site. Variance, some people would ask, what, what's that all about? In the case of this one, believe it or not, Minnesota statutes dictates how cities as local planning organizations can basically make variances or changes to their code within reason. They have to have set reasons and rationale and findings of fact for doing this. And so, I wanted you to know, there's some oversight. There's actually timelines as well. The state legislature wanted to make sure that as cities are considering these matters, they're not being arbitrary or capricious and they actually will conduct the business within 60 days. So, so there's a timeline on this one. You're still well within reason. I wanted to move forward to this slide because, while it's not the greatest picture, it does at least provide you though with a circle around the location on West Broadway of this property at 3819 West Broadway under consideration. There were some pictures in your packet as well that got into more detail on the zoning, which right now it's zoned residential business, you might recall. And if some members of the public or you are wondering, why does this sound so familiar? As noted in your packet, you took up the, it was actually a zoning text change that allowed for this type of use, which is a public utili-, excuse me, a private utility building within that residential business district. So, you took that action back in December. Now, these folks are just following through. They're asking for a variance and then the next action, they'll be asking for a conditional use permit for this specialized type of business at Here's a little of what I was getting to about Minnesota statute 462. It says that variances may be granted if the request meets the following. Generally, that the variance is found to have harmony with the purposes and intent of your city planning and zoning code, that it's consistent with the comprehensive land use plan. And by the way, these parts, this parcel is zoned mixed-use commercial. So, a private utility building would certainly fit within that. You're also asked though to think about, can you grant the variance because there's a practical difficulty that the applicant identified? And in this case, when they, the state statute actually defines practical difficulties, they say that you should be considering, A, is the property owner, what they're proposing to do reasonable? And then B, or number two, is the plight of the landowner due to circumstances unique to the property and not something that they have caused? And then the third item is to get the variance, if granted, will it alter the essential character of the locality? So, I just wanted to bring that up. We've got some newer counselors and mayors, just as a little background. These are the principles that your planning commission, when they considered this on February 20th, were asked to consider, certainly something that we as staff talked about before we brought this forward. And I just wanted to highlight that even though it's in your packet as well. The US Internet variance request, let's think first of all, a little bit more going on your memory. Who are they? So, they're an internet fiber, high-speed internet provider, I should say. They, the fiber is actually constructed such that it'll be underground. This facility will be a one-story brick building. In future slides and certainly in your packet, you saw some pictures of the proposed building once it is constructed. It looks like a one-story commercial building, very nondescript. It will have windows in the front, but they are faux windows because for security reasons. They'll have brick behind them. We really don't want the public to have access to the, the data inside, as you can imagine. And this is not a retail establishment. People and customers will not be coming and going from this facility. So, I just wanted to make that very clear that while its intent is to blend in to this location, it truly is not retail. It truly is not residential. It's not large or light manufacturing. It's almost something that is, is difficult to define. But for all of those reasons, I thought it was really important to point out that this is unique. And in this case, the property actually sits within what's called zoning-wise, your transportation overlay district. That district was intended, as it's downtown, to really push buildings up closer to the street that are retail, restaurant, services. That's not what this is. That's not what this is. So, right away, we knew, okay, this is a different animal. Perhaps we felt as staff, a variance is warranted. So, there's a required three-foot maximum setback from the property line in the front for a TOD, or Transportation Overlay District property. In this case, these folks are asking for a variance for a 30-foot setback. I will tell you, staff thought, you know what, that's reasonable, given the use. Again, this is not a restaurant, it's not retail. But it will fit in with the other buildings in the area, especially as there's more development perhaps in the future. So, we felt this was a good fit and a smart thing to consider. Moving on to a few other points about the variance request. Besides the 30-foot, I mentioned that in your packet, they had originally suggested that they not have windows. The Transportation Overlay District requires windows. I think, again, these folks demonstrated at US Internet that they wanted to work with us as a city. So, that's why it was actually, they were comfortable suggesting that they have faux glass windows with a brick behind. It meets the needs with respect to appearance and blending into the neighborhood. But it provides then the safety and security they need of that, that equipment on the inside. I think one more point to make, again, is the intent of those Transportation Overlay District requirements on the setback is to make sure that the area is pedestrian-friendly. Oftentimes, when you have buildings that are set back with parking lots in front, it just doesn't have a good feel in terms of walkability. Well, what's unique about this property is actually, it's long and thin. It's not 100% within the Transportation Overlay District. Only about a half of the property is. It's actually the side that's closest to West Broadway. But you know, you probably noticed on the maps, it actually goes out to Hubbard on the other side. The parking lot will be on that side. It will be very small, again, because they won't have customers. It's only six stalls, and I recall, or five or six. So, again, that's a practical difficulty they didn't cause as a future property owner. It's just the nature of the property in the parcel itself. So, for all of those reasons, staff is recommending approval of the variance. And as a little background about the planning commission, the public hearing was held on February 20th. We had a full complement of planning commissioners. We had a few members of the public. And while we, they did, a couple of them did speak to the issue. They actually spoke in favor of this change. And they also spoke to how they felt this would complement their neighborhood. So, the planning commission then voted unanimously with staff's recommendation that the city council approve the variance. And then lastly, again, our staff's recommendation is that you approve the variance. And again, this is just for, rather than having a three-foot setback from West Broadway, there's a 30-foot setback. And we did prepare for your consideration, a draft resolution, should one of you want to make motion to that. And then I'll take up the next item after you deliberate and take action. All right?
Excellent. Thank you. Counselor? Questions? Comments? Mr. Wagner?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Heather. The existing structure that's there, what's the setback of that? It seems very close to 30 feet, just from my looking at it, but I don't know for sure.
You are correct. Mr. Mayor and Councillor Wagner, the 30 feet actually, that's being proposed right now, mimics the building more or less to the north, its setback. The building to the south, I'm not exactly answering your question, I realize, but the building to the south acts even a greater setback. And that's that, I believe, assisted living senior apartment building. It has a driveway that kind of use around. All I can tell you at this point is that the existing building, you're right, is setback much farther. I just don't have the exact measurements. Now, with us tonight in the audience from US Internet is Zachary Johnson and Mr. Tim Martin. The realtor for the property is also in the audience. We could certainly ask them, but I just wanted to reassure you that the way the current building is, that would be demolished, it sets back much, much farther than what was being proposed.
Thank you. Yeah, it was kind of a leading question, I suppose, because yeah, I just wanted to use that to just say like that, why I support this, because it, you know, matches the other buildings around it. The current one is in a very similar position. So, I don't have any concerns about granting this variance.
I mean, I feel the same way for a little bit of a different reason in the sense that the spirit of the transit overlay and why we want, I mean, trying to expand a business district that's going to have stores and retail and restaurants. And that does make sense that those are right on the street or the sidewalk, whereas this is a totally different use, and it makes sense. You know, I mean, this is why we're going through this variance process. But in my mind, fits with the neighborhood and what's going on there, but also makes sense for what it is going to be used for, which is different than the intention of the TOD, from my perspective.
Is there a motion to? Yeah, I'll make a motion.
I make a motion to recommend approval of draft resolution attachment C that offer, authorizes the code variance V25-1 request for 3819 West Broadway for US Internet, which allows a 30-foot front yard setback.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say no or nay? All right, that motion passes. Onto the next item, considering a resolution for approving the conditional use permit for 3819 West Broadway.
That's right. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. So, the companion item then is the conditional use permit. As I mentioned back in December, you approved an allowance that a private utility building could be located in a business, excuse me, residential business zoned property, but only with a conditional use permit. We typically, I call them CUPs. We, as cities, we require a CUP when it's a little bit different of a use, but still makes practical sense. But we just want to make sure that we get that one last review on a case-by-case basis. Okay? So, that's what you're doing tonight. So, going forward. The applicant, again, US Internet, they specialize in fiber optic Internet services. And it just occurred to me, some people might wonder, who are they? Where are they? Right now, they have customers in Minneapolis, St. Louis Park, Edina, Richfield, Minnetonka, St. Anthony. Some people would argue that a city is well-served when you have some robust competition when it comes to private utilities such as this. I would suggest that. Perhaps you as a council do so. I'm delighted that they're considering our community and, but they need the CUP to properly function on this site. They are hoping to construct less than 4,000 square-foot building. It's, as I mentioned before, brick, one story. So, brick is nice. It's not a pole shed, even though it's, you know, a private utility building, not for retail. It does have in the rear yard or the Hubbard side, it will be landscaped, and there will be some parking, really just for employees who will come and go. And, let's see. Here's the nicer map that I meant to have actually in my last slide deck. But I say nicer, it's easier to read. It really identifies clearly the current Women's Health Center Building on that property, surrounded by the Aqua Line, just to the north. Then you can see, I believe it's called Catholic Charities. I apologize if I had that wrong, but that building. And then there's the assisted living senior housing multifamily complex to the south. So, that gives a really clear picture of what's going on. We all know what we're talking about. Here's a little bit more about transportation overlay districts. We got into that already though, about how there was the glazing, had to have windows. Again, I'm impressed that these folks said, fine, we'll give you your windows. We'll make it work, even though they'll be faux. When it came to staff's review of their applications, I just wanted you to know in general, I found US Internet staff to be very helpful and very accommodating. They are going to have some issues that they're going to have to work through with our city engineer and our public works department when it comes to the actual lane of the fiber throughout the city. But I would suggest it's no different than any other private utility. They're going to need permits, they're going to need a plan, they're going to need agreement and support and permission from our public works department. So, we're not there yet, that will be future steps. Here's a site plan. Maybe a little difficult to make up, but again, if you remember the buildings, this is how they currently stand, but there you can see. I'm wondering. I was trying to remember if I could remember how to do the laser. But this one does have the proposed new building and the shaded, so that you can get the location and reference that to. In the middle of that parcel, you can see then the existing property. This is a mock-up. It's probably not totally 30 feet back as they propose. But it gives you a general sense of what this could look like from West Broadway. So, we just, in this case, their architect, Meyer Group, wanted to give you some kind of rendering, just to visualize. And... That's the rendering of the back of the building with the parking and some landscaping. There will be fencing on each side. We thought it was really important to include that the city, again, the city engineering review in this. They did have some bullet points, some of them I have already spoken to. Just wanted to, I think, more than anything, make the point once again that just because perhaps tonight, you're approving, you approved a variance, and if you approve the conditional use permit, this is a company that will still have to work very closely with our public works department to lay out that fiber over the course of perhaps, it's going to be three years. And they are here tonight, if you want to ask them some more specific questions when I wrap up here. They'd be happy to try to address those, US Internet would. But I, I think that, again, I was pleased to see that we have very capable city engineering who gave some forethought and direction to these folks so they know what their expectations would be if and when they come to our city. So, like the last one, public hearing was held on February 20th. Meeting notices were mailed, encouraging those with interest that reside or own property within 350 feet of this 3819 West Broadway property. Were all invited to attend. As I mentioned before, there were a few, they spoke in support. We didn't hear any opposition. And with that, here's where we get into a little more detail when it comes to CUPs. We like, as planning staff and administration, to actually put a little meat into the conditional use permit because as the years go by, we like to go back and reference those and make sure that the CUP, as it applies to that property, that people actually did comply with what was required. And we think that these are really important points. So, first of all, findings of fact for a conditional use permit. Staff recommended, and then the planning commission concurred, that what, the CUP for this actual new building and use is consistent with the comprehensive plan, that it matches the geography of the area, that it will not cause deterioration, that it fits the character of the surrounding area, that there's a demonstrated need for this type of service or use at the property, that the proposed use won't cause odors, dust, flies, vermin, et cetera. That such use will lead or it won't encourage disturbing influences in the neighborhood. Oh, my goodness, you might wonder, what is all this? But it's in your city code, so I'm just reciting that, and I thought you should be familiar with it. And then lastly, any stored equipment or materials will be screened. For CUPs, we do this for other businesses too. So, I don't want you to think we're picking on this, this is just how our code reads. So, the planning commission and staff's recommendation, after thinking that through and talking it through, we all recommend that the condition use permit request for 3819 West Broadway, i.e. the US Internet project, be adopted or approved by the city council with the following conditions, that the generator on site not exceed 70 decibels, as per code, that the property will be permitted five parking stalls, and one of them has to be handicapped. Actually, that's state law. That future fiber optic cable installations inside the public rate of way must be routed in a manner authorized by the city engineer with appropriate permits pulled. And that, of course, building construction permits for the new building, and actually, the demolition of the old will be required. We have all sorts of rules and regulations that have to be complied with. You might wonder, why do we insert that there? These folks certainly know anyway, and they've got some great consultants. But you'd be surprised, sometimes we do have some businesses that forget that they need to pull permits. So, nothing personal, we just put that on there. So, you have a draft resolution in your packet, and we suggest that you consider that. And perhaps if you have some more questions from myself or the applicant, we would all be happy to address those first.
Excellent. Okay, any questions on this one? Yes.
Thank you. My first question is related to the parking spaces. So, this indicates five parking spaces with one handicap stall. The, from looking at the bird's eye view, what struck me was the amount of impervious space that's required for this parking lot. And I'm curious how that five, the five spaces came to be, if that was a requirement from the applicant, or if that is, you mentioned state law, if that's the handicap portion or a ratio related to that. So, I'm curious about how that five number of stalls came to be.
Certainly. Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Councillor Perazan. The number, it was actually part of an ongoing discussion. It's possible at any one time, they could have trucks or cars for up to probably five, maybe six employees at that site. It would be very rare. I'm told when they're first setting it up, there would be more employees or employee trucks, vans, et cetera there. But that over time, it would be more common to have just one or two of their vans or service vehicles at that site. That being said, I will tell you, not that I want these folks to ever change, but thinking of a one-story building and its small size, we did want to also think in terms of the future, if the use does change, and wanted to make sure that there was at least a couple of parking stalls there. I will tell you that there were conversations with US Internet and our arborist at the city on the topic of how many existing trees could be saved, what can we do with the landscaping plan? I know that every effort on their part, they've assured us is trying, at least they're trying to be made, to save as many trees. There's a clump of trees that they could speak more, I believe, directly to, and I believe that's Zach in their team. And so, if you'd like to know a little bit more about their landscaping plan, perhaps we could call Zach up here, and he could address that.
Thank you. I did review the landscaping plans, and I saw that one of the trees cannot be saved and the other two can, which I think is always important. Happy to see some of the renderings featuring landscaping. I think my, my hope is that we can reduce the amount of pavement wherever possible, especially for new construction. I still understand the intent for future use. But with my next question, I think is along the same lines around sustainability and energy use. So, Robinsdale has a lot of goals and initiatives related to energy usage. And I'm wondering if you or the applicant would be able to speak to how a data center and the amount of energy or resources or water cooling, all of those requirements to run a data center, how that might impact some of Robinsdale's sustainability goals?
Certainly. Mr. Mayor and Councillor Perazan, I would suggest that I let US Internet try to address that. But did want to make the point, certainly, there is those really large data centers, you know, that can use the energy a lot. I just heard about one today. The energy uses, it was similar to what like 50 Coscos would be. That's not what we're talking about here, it's a much smaller facility. But that being said, very relevant question. But that being said, very relevant question. So let's bring them up here and let them address it. Thank you.
Thank you, Heather. Hello, my name's Tim Martin. I'm the CFO for U.S. Internet. As far as power, it is correct, we're building a data center. But this data center isn't like you're hearing on the news and, you know, the big behemoths that are being constructed. And our data center isn't like data mining, which is heavy user of power. It's really a switching station that our fibers coming into and switching to get it to the internet or to what the users are doing, whether it's streaming or what have you, where actually 80% of the volume is streaming, which is actually off our cash servers, that it doesn't even hit the internet. So yes, a data center, but not heavy power usage. The other thing is we're running DC power versus AC, which is more efficient. But to be candid, it will use power. That's the nature of the game with, you know, when you're trying to build a fiber network. So, but we've done it, we believe, in the most efficient way possible that we can.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, I have a question. Thank you. Thanks for being here.
Yep.
And thank you, Heather, for the presentation. Just as far as noise, and I know the last time you were here, we talked about this as well, but I know in the packet, it essentially said like the HVAC units and power that would be used in whatever capacity was. It's going to be about the same amount of sound as the building that's there today. Is that accurate?
Well, I'm not sure if it's the same amount of sound, but that being said, our generator, I think there's a lot of question of the generator and the noise. The generator is only when our facility loses power. So if our facility loses power, it doesn't put the network down. So let's say we're the one block area that doesn't have power and the rest of your city has power. We don't want all the rest of your city not to have internet access. So that's for the generator. We do do periodic tests on it during the middle of the day. We have taken readings at other facilities and actually when we've ran it and gone to the edge, it's much lower than the 70 decibel kind of requirement. And there is a barrier around the generator, so we don't believe that's an issue. It isn't going to be noticeable. We do have HVAC on the roof sort of thing that will be running. But again, at our, at our facility at Snelling where city staff visited, they saw the facility and, you know, you know, and even commented that the noise level, you know, they didn't really even notice. And actually, we had a generator test going on at that time, so they even got to hear the generator. And in that facility, it's over off of Snelling in southeast Minneapolis. It's residential on both sides, apartment building behind. So we've never had a complaint with the HVAC and these are houses right, right next door. So very similar situation, so. And this isn't our, I'm not sure if you've seen in your map, we have, you know, a half a dozen of these around. So it isn't our first kind of foray in doing this, so.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Heather, can I ask just one question as far as the conditional use? I know that all the designs have the landscaping and the way that it's designed. I know there are requirements around the windows, so we appreciate them accommodating that. But in the conditional use, there are no rules around like what landscaping should be included or what we recommend? Is that something we can include in a conditional use? Or do you feel like there are requirements as opposed? I mean, we can look at these plans and then they're like, yeah, we didn't want to do any of that and if we didn't require it, it could potentially go away? I guess would be my concern. I don't anticipate that, but I'm just asking.
Sure. Mr. Mayor and Councilor Greenberg, let's, correct me if I, I'm not grabbing this right, but I, I think what you're saying is like perhaps in their application, you appreciated the landscaping plan. You want to make sure they comply with that? That would be my understanding of what you're saying. I would suggest you could add as a condition that, you know, that, I'm trying to think of the date of their application, but basically that the landscaping plan in their application is adhered to or something like that. I will just tell you, we as staff, we just assumed that since it's in their application, that we're going to hold them to that though. Okay?
Okay. So it, does that, I mean, I guess that's a question. Does it need to be stated or it, because it's in the plan, that's the expectation?
I would suggest since it's in their application, we're going to hold them to it. You really don't need it. It really is. But if, you know, that's something you really want to stress, you could certainly add.
Okay, thank you.
Yep. You might recall us on the app, you know, it has the general layout of the building. We're not listing that as a condition. We're just taking them at their word that that's their application that for the conditional use permit, therefore, we're going to, as staff, we'll hold them to that. Okay?
Thank you.
Questions?
Thank you, Mayor. Tim, with the, I heard that this, like if these things get approved, the construction will begin quarter three. When do you anticipate with your ideal timeline for customers to get online?
Well, the challenge with construction of quarter three is, you know, obviously in Minnesota, our build season is limited. And especially depending on Robbinsdale, if they follow MinDOT rules as far as we can get in, or certain cities do, certain cities don't, where in certain cities, we can only work from April 15th to roughly November 15th or so. So it's a very short season. So most likely with construction beginning in later half of this year, we probably won't start kind of the underground boring until the following year sort of thing. And then we're probably looking at a two to three-year build. Most likely in year one, we'll take a little bit smaller because we're new to the city, new to the city staff. The city staff's got to get used to us getting used to the contractors and we don't want to inundate the city, be tearing up, you know, going up and down. So that's why start a little bit slower, get to know, you know, the process. And again, we've been in many different cities sort of thing, but start slow. But yeah, we're probably looking at a two to three-year construction.
Okay, wonderful. And I know in the past, U.S. Internet had that like map of future service areas. Is that still updated? Is that still a thing that you guys do?
One thing, when we used to propose or go on our website and list future builds, competition used to use it against us sort of thing. So we're, we're very open with city staff and talking, but we don't post that publicly. But you can imagine, we're with this in Robbinsdale, that'll be a point of emphasis over the next three years. We also just got awarded a conditional use permit in St. Paul off of Randolph Avenue, so we're building in St. Paul. We're currently building in Ridgefield. We're finishing up at Adina. We're close to finishing St. Louis Park. We'll be in Columbia Heights. So, man, we've got much of Minneapolis covered as well.
Okay, wonderful. And then I guess just for my benefit, could you just explain kind of the difference between fiber and broadband? Like for folks that, you know, wondering why?
Not all fibers created equal either, to tell you the truth. Where, what our model's different as compared to some others is we run an individual fiber strand underground to a building. And that fiber strand will run back from, let's say, a single-family home all the way back to our switching station that we're proposing here. With other, others, they may run aerial and they'll run a fiber strand in a neighborhood and maybe break it 36 ways or 36 times or maybe even more. So it's not a dedicated fiber. The other difference with our network, which really shows, I know the Republic people talked about customer service ratings and actually you look at telecommunications companies and internet companies sometimes have the lowest customer service rating. If you look at our Google Star rating, it's like 4.6, 4.7 as well, so very high. But where our network differentiates itself is our relationships with the Netflix, the Googles of the world, where we privately cache their information. So when our customers are using the internet and using like streaming Netflix, it's not going out to the internet. It's going to one of our cash servers, one of our other data centers. So it's never hits the internet. What that helps is you don't have all this buffering. When you hit Netflix, a lot of them, you see the buffering like go three, four times. Ours will be less than one sort of thing. So our network performance is one of the best in the industry. It's a dedicated fiber strand which can power a small country for that matter. So that's how we differentiate ourselves is a much superior network build. And again, it's more costly for us. Everyone looks at us crazy, why are we doing an individual fiber strand? But it's future-proof. As bandwidth requirements build and build, all we have to do is switch the optics on the end and some of the electronics while the fiber will be there. We were the first in the world to get to 10 gig service where we had a couple Target representatives in South Minneapolis with 10 gig. We're, we do offer 10 gig service. We could offer 100 gig for that matter. So that's where a lot of other competition can't do that.
Right, yeah, and fiber, speed of light, hard to beat that, right?
Yeah, until, there's no better technology right now. So this is really future-proofing Robbinsdale and we think it'll really help economic development and that because a lot of, you know, that's the nature of things, especially unfortunately during the pandemic with all the work from home and that. People couldn't do Zoom calls or, you know, just because of the bandwidth. There won't be issues with our network.
Great to hear, thank you.
Yep.
Other questions?
I have one question is, so will this cover 100% of residents in Robbinsdale? And let me qualify that. I know there are some streets, like Crystal Lake Boulevard, where fiber doesn't run because it's not convenient to come down to that street because it's kind of dead ends and it's not a very long street.
Yeah, the, our intent would be to cover the city. That being said, right now where some of the challenges with the engineering we have is south of this facility with this bike trail and that and moratorium. So that could create challenges. We have challenges in Minneapolis related to the park board that they don't recognize right of way. So we couldn't go down parkways because there's no right of way. So if there aren't those challenges, our intent would be to 100% cover Robbinsdale.
There's no other questions? We have a motion?
Yeah, I move that we pass the conditional use permit with the conditions outlined on this slide and as them, or as talked about by staff.
Second. All right, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say no or nay.
Replacement of city buildings. The major buildings in the city's portfolio are City Hall, the Public Safety Building, Public Works, and the Historic Library. Included in the 2026 Capital Improvement Program is the reconstruction or is the construction of a new public works facility. This particular project has been spoken about for many years and first appeared in the 10-year CAP plan in 2020 when the city shifted from a five-year planning horizon to a 10-year planning horizon. It's expected that the construction for this project start in 2026. The need for this, this work is pretty easy to see. The existing public works facility was originally constructed in the 1950s. It's been added on to at various times since then in order to adapt itself to changing needs, size of vehicles, regulations and what have you. Despite the modifications to that facility, it's pretty woeful. It is well undersized. It's, doesn't have very good vehicle storage space. Its functionality is poor and the ability to maintain vehicles in there is inadequate. Added to that, numerous systems like the electrical system and the HVAC system have reached their useful life. So you really can't get components for them or you would have to do a complete code upgrade to the whole thing. And the structural members in that building, some of them are damaged. There's cracked masonry walls. It's showing its age of being a building from the 1950s. Right now, each year, we allocate $40,000 in the capital works program to try and limp the building along as best we can to address, put out the fires, if you like, of some of these inadequate systems until we can get a plan together for its replacement. At some stage, probably early in the spring, we will plan to have a meeting down at the Public Works Facility Proto Council Meeting so you can all have a hands-on look at what this building looks like. Preliminary works on this project commenced about 12 months ago. Clearly with a building of this size, that's not something you can just jump into straight away and have done within a matter of weeks. You have to start planning ahead and what have you. 12 months ago, an RFP was issued to consultants, qualified architects, to conduct a needs analysis of the public works operations and develop a conceptual design plan. The competitive process reviewed the understanding of the project, experience of the company with samples of previous works, experience and qualifications of key employees and cost to perform the work. We had a group of staff analyze the submissions we received. It was something in the order of five or six we received. And after that analysis, Ortel Architects was selected to perform that work. The needs analysis and conceptual design was completed in August of last year. In addition to that, the city was fortunate to get a grant from the PCA to conduct a feasibility study on the use of geothermal energy. That was a particular issue that the previous mayor was, was very keen on investigating. So that feasibility study was completed in January of this year and it did find, it did indicate the geothermal energy is feasible on the site. The next stage of conducting this development of a design or is the development of the design, plan preparation and gathering together the specifications that would allow the city to put this project out for bid. So staff sought a proposal from, from Ortel to continue from their prior work and perform these next stages of work. We also asked them to provide a cost that goes beyond just the preparation of the plans and specs. It also leads us through the, the next phase of the project, which is the bidding and negotiations, the construction administration, and then the finalizing of the projects after the construction work is complete. The necessary consultants, the architect would act like the central consultant, if you like, and would have to go out and get assistance from structural engineers, electrical engineers, landscape architects, and a whole raft of different consultants to pull all of these different elements together. The summary of the costs was shown in your report. For all of those elements, the total cost is estimated at about $1.16 million to do all of that work. Not included in that work are some other specific items such as the geothermal heat pump design, any wetland delineation, a topographic and boundary survey, and any additional site observations which we're not anticipating at this stage. Copy of the full proposal was made available for council members to have a look at. And the, myself, I think that the totals that we've been provided with are within expectations for a project like this. And whilst all of these tasks would not be immediately conducted, we'd kind of, kind of get up to the construction document stage and then we'd have a stop. The city council would then have the opportunity to say, well, yes, proceed to the next stage, which would be the bidding and, and construction. Staff think it's prudent to include all of this now so that we're not going out later on to get those other prices as well. This, this gives us a good indication of what's going to be needed to get this project to completion. Clearly, if the work's not done, you don't pay them for that part. So at this stage, staff is recommending the approval of the slate of work that's been identified in the report. We would also recommend that the city include the topographic and boundary survey and that's an additional $26,700. That would allow an accurate identification of the site, the boundaries for the site, placing of the corners for the site so we know exactly where the, the property lines are. And then further discussion, we'll, we'll have to have with, with city council to talk about the geothermal energy design. And then further discussion we'll, we'll have to have with, with city council to talk about the geothermal energy design. Uh, that's an additional twenty-five thousand dollars. But I think uh, the discussion we'd like to have with council is uh, just the, the cost of such systems. Uh, they're not cheap, um, but they do help to address some of the climate goals and the decarbonization that the city council has been pretty uh, supportive of over time. But I just want city council to be aware of what the cost of the, of the actual implementation of those wells is. Staff also anticipate some additional costs with elements like geotech, the soil borings. We've got to get soil borings out there. So when they're doing the design, they're, they're designing the slabs to the correct thickness. They're designing the foundations to the, the, the correct proportions. And we'd also have to do a hazardous materials analysis on the existing building. Anything built, built, you know, fifties or before? The risk is there's asbestos or other nasty materials in there that have to be taken care of. So we would be doing our due diligence in, in getting a hazardous materials analysis done on that. And those costs would be separate from those that I've already identified in the report. There's also uh, lots of other activities associated with this project that are already running in parallel um, to this work being done. That includes uh, having the, the public works supervisory staff figure out, well, how are we going to operate for eighteen months with no public works building? And that is a really important element because we still have to service the city. And those guys are looking into it. And um, further details will be presented to city council as they start to, to mesh all of this stuff together. So based on the, the timeline provided, um, thirty percent schematic design is scheduled for May of this year, sixty percent by August of this year, and ninety-five percent design with construction documents by February of twenty twenty-six. That would allow, um, if council is on board with it, that would allow the bidding and the construction of the work to start in May of twenty twenty-six as soon as road limits are off. Based on that, substantial completion could be considered by fall or winter of twenty twenty-seven. Now, the initial cost estimate for the facility itself uh, was provided in September twenty twenty-four. It indicated a, a, a construction cost of forty million dollars. And to me, that, that seems high, given that the water treatment plant didn't cost forty million dollars. I know prices are going up constantly, but I, I think we need to explore that more. And at each step along the way, if you, you read the uh, the submission, that there are cost estimates provided at each step. So I think as, as design is refined more, you can reduce things like contingencies and what have you because you got a better idea of what you're actually doing. And I think we'll get a, a more accurate cost uh, as that design continues. I did note in my report that, that did include a fifteen percent contingency, four percent in escalation costs, and about six and a half million in soft costs, which is things like permits, testing, inspections, legal and bidding costs. And that, that's an awful lot for a building like this too. So my personal opinion is I, I think the price for that building will come in a lot less than that. But this is the information we have right now and we refine it as we go. The capital works improvement for this year for twenty twenty-five does include two million dollars and that is anticipation of commencing this part of the project to get the designs done, to start getting the uh, the soil borings done and things like that. The recommendation of staff is to uh, engage Ortel and their consultant partners in a professional services contract for the design and construction services associated with the new Robbinsdale Public Works Facility in accordance with the submitted proposal that we've all seen for a sum not to exceed that one point one five seven nine one five dollars. In addition, uh, staff is, is recommending that city council authorize the inclusion of the topographic and boundary survey for an additional cost not to exceed twenty-six thousand seven hundred and ninety dollars. And that the consideration of including the geothermal energy system design will be made after further consideration by city council.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Um, council, any questions? Yes, Mr. Wagner?
Uh, thank you, Mayor. No, it's all good. Uh, I feel like I'm always going first. Um, Richard, can you just, um, just for my benefit, I guess, just explain what the public works building is for and what it does? I think that'll be helpful for me and then also maybe residents that are curious on what it does.
Yeah, the, the public works facility acts as, as the base, if you like, for all of our public works operations. So it houses all of our uh, trucks. It houses all of the equipment that go onto those trucks. It houses all of the materials that go into those trucks to go out for, say, plowing. It ha- houses all of the salt, um, any sand that we have to uh, put down on the really steep roads to, to get a bit of grip. We also house other bulk materials out there uh, to fill in holes if there's water main breaks and what have you. Uh, we temporarily store the uh, the materials that come out of those holes, which is normally saturated clay. Um, especially this time of year, it's nasty. It's got to be, you know, left on site to drain away a little bit. Uh, we, we use it as a staging area for the uh, some brush that's uh, removed as part of the uh, forestry contracts. It holds things like hydrants, manhole lids, spare pavers, uh, spare light poles, all of that sort of stuff, signs, all of the, the kind of bits and pieces, posts that you would expect uh, that is necessary to use for maintenance and replacement purposes for all of the asset groups that we look after here in the city. Uh, the, we do the maintenance on our, on our fleet out there also. Um, so we have two mechanics bays that are somewhat limited in size. We've got a big uh, pole barn that stores all the, the vehicles that don't fit in the, the main building. And uh, then there is the salt shed that houses the salt, the brining machine. And uh, there's a few attached uh, garages to that that hold recreation uh, materials. And one of the garages, I think, is used by the police department to store uh, retrieved bicycles and other bits and pieces as, as a holding area before that gets moved on.
Great, thank you.
Yeah, Stefan's got his uh, gravel bed down there also. So there's, a lot goes on in that yard.
Yeah, I had, for sure. And then what technological improvements do you want to see in this project? And then also, you may have mentioned this, but I might, probably missed it, well, I did miss it if you did mention it. Is there going to be like fuel pumps on site?
The fuel pumps, I'll answer first. Uh, that, that's something we have thought about. Fuel pumps are, are very convenient if they're on your own site. They come with a long laundry list of requirements for testings, inspections, and what have you. I think the, the direction of the, the staff group looking into this is that we, and because of the constricted size of the site, we are thinking that we do not want to have fuel pumps on site. Um, technology increases, uh, certainly, uh, you know, having fiber down there and, and having proper security and, you know, we already have uh, computer systems down there, but making sure that they're in tune with what we need. We have a backup scader system down there so our, our utilities folks can keep an eye on the water treatment plant from down at Public Works without actually having to be down at the water treatment plant. Um, you know, and, and other things we, we're considering too is uh, as well as the geothermal is the, you know, it's going to have a, a large flat roof, so that's going to be perfect for something like another solar array on the roof just to try and, you know, peak some of those, take the peak away from some of those energy uses.
And then office space, is that going to be s- improved or same amount or?
Yeah, we're, at, at, at the moment, what we're looking at is uh, probably a two-story administrative part in one corner of the building. Um, and the, the philosophy is that we would house the, the public work staff and the engineering staff in that building.
Okay, great. Thank you. No, yeah, those are all my questions.
And well, go ahead, council member.
Um, I guess one question just around the geothermal system. Obviously, there's expense to have that. Is there, I know with the solar panels, there's efficiencies gained as far as sustainability, but there's also savings in the amount of electricity that we're actually purchasing or using. Um, is, from a geothermal system, is it similar as far as, or is it like way more than what a solar system would be able to?
It, it is way more, uh, because you're drilling wells into the aquifer. Uh, the, the feasibility report recommended that two wells would be, would be able to address the heating and cooling needs of the administrative section of that building. Um, so part of the discussion I'll be having with you at a, at a later session is to get into the nitty-gritty of what those costs are, um, what that means for compliance with certain standards for energy uh, requirements on buildings and what have you. And have that discussion on whether that's something that the city wishes to pursue, knowing what the cost will be. But they, they are quite costly.
And then would this be like, it, it, are you thinking like LEED certification and things like that or?
No, that's not even for LEED certification.
Okay. Some other certifications that would allow?
You know, we, I, I guess we haven't really delved too much into, to LEED certification. Um, I, I could ask the architect, you know, for a rough idea of what would be needed to at least get like a silver rating or something?
Yeah, no, and, and it's not necessarily that it's important to me. It's more of the sense of, if we're going to put all this money into a geothermal system, I want to make sure that we're getting, you know, not only is it efficient and, and uses less energy, but like, how does it benefit Robbinsdale, you know?
Yep, I agree. And that, that's why I, I, I think we should have a, a separate discussion about that.
Okay. I think that might be it for me. Council member Parisian?
Thank you. Um, along the same lines of the geom- geothermal um, system design, um, I'm certainly intrigued to learn more and hopeful that uh, this, this can work out. I am curious if you know if any of our neighboring cities or communities have um, similar systems or if we could potentially be a climate leader in the sense.
I will fi- I don't know offhand the answer to that question, but I will find out. So that when we do sit down and talk about it, I will have an answer for you.
Okay, that sounds great. Um, along those same lines with partnering with our neighboring communities, um, you mentioned earlier the concern about where we will house public works um, during those eighteen months. Is that something that you see as feasible or an opportunity to um, sort of tap our neighbors um, in terms of their space and?
Well, that's uh, interesting you, you mentioned that council member Parisian because uh, our public works guys have been talking to the city of Crystal.
Okay.
Um, as you may be aware, they built a fairly new facility on West Broadway. Uh, they didn't demolish their old facility, which is kind of behind the fair school there, uh, by one of those, those ponds down there. So uh, we're talking to them about whether they can accommodate some of our needs in that facility for the period of time that we're looking for.
Okay, thank you. Those are all my questions.
That sparks another question for me of just, if there, if that isn't possible to utilize their facilities, I mean, maybe they can offset some of it. Is there, would it be feasible to do like a phased approach where we're?
For the construction?
Yeah, just that we're like building parts where we can, we have enough room to store this piece. We build that part and then, or is it, that's not the way we do these types of projects?
Uh, council member Greenberg, that might be challenging, uh, just given the, the nature of the size of the site and um, some of the, the details associated with that. I think um, you know, I, I've tasked the, the public works supervisors to think about a plan B.
Yeah.
Yeah, what is plan B? If, if our desired option doesn't come to fruition.
Okay, thank you. Um, I've got a couple of questions. Uh, one thing that popped up, and I know this is in the scope of this discussion, but our partnership with Crystal, there's fuel pumps or something that we, they would allow us to use. Are we doing that today? Do we know?
Uh, Mr. Mayor, council, we're currently experiencing some technological uh, challenges with that. Uh, we have executed an agreement. Uh, the purchasing is ready to go. Uh, we're uh, right now buying uh, fuel locally, but as soon as those tech things get ironed out, we'll be back up there purchasing.
Okay. Um, and then how, how does this project compare in size to like similar cities? I mean, it, I know you said forty million sounds like a lot. It's caught my attention when I was reading through this. Uh, so, you know, do we, do we know? Or I mean, how do we stack up to similar sized cities?
Uh, Mr. Mayor, I can uh, gather some more data for some of the more recent um, public works facilities that have been completed. And I'll try and pick on ones that are approximately the size that we're looking at for Robbinsdale.
Yeah.
I think the Crystal facility is slightly larger than, than what we would be looking at. But I can find out the, the final cost for that facility, just to, to put it in some context.
Yeah. And I, and I hear you that we limp along at forty thousand dollars a year. Um, is, tell me, safe, are there safety concerns with the current public works building?
Yes.
Yeah, okay. Just want to see if there are other questions here. Um, this is ignorant speaking. I'm going to play the new guy card maybe for just a few more times. But I'm, if I'm a taxpayer and I'm sitting here in the city of Robbinsdale and I just heard these numbers, I'm thinking to myself, how much is this going to cost me? How does this get paid for? I mean, I know there's bonds, there are grants. What is the impact?
Uh, Mr. Mayor, council, respectfully, you are a taxpayer.
Yes, I am, yes. Well aware.
The, the number is uh, the, the number is very significant and we take it very seriously. You know, uh, in the lead up to this is uh, Mr. McCoy talked about the months-long process just to get to this point, um, that initial stage. That took a year. And as that process was occurring, sort of in tandem, uh, on the other side of the building, the finance department was working to explore what opportunities might be out there. One thing I like to share with folks in a project of this scope, um, the larger agencies, uh, whether it's going to be the, the governor's budget next year. The governor does a budget in twenty twenty-six. Uh, whether it's uh, federal earmarks, other special revenue uh, through grants, et cetera. Um, this is the type of project that gets taken much more seriously when this type of work is done. It, it, it's one thing to go and say, you know, this is something we have in our plan. We want to implement this, uh, but when we go to our, our legislators at any level um, in partial, in full, uh, ask for this level of money, they take us much more serious. Uh, you do mention bonding, that could certainly be a part of it. Um, so for those not familiar, essentially a loan. Um, we do facilitate uh, both facilities and rolling stock on that, um, just to spread out that burden. So we as staff take that concern very seriously. Uh, don't hap-hazardly put this type of project in front of you. Again, as Mr. McCoy noted, um, in a similar vein to the water treatment plant, something that had been talked about for years before we even got to this point. Um, the, the, the planning continues. So if we get that signal from council that this goes forward, we start those mechanisms again in tandem. So you don't see that in your report here today. Um, it sounds a bit of a dance round in that we don't have a funding source fully identified. Um, but as uh, again, Mr. McCoy alluded to, that this gets you to that next step. This doesn't require you uh, next spring to, to take that next step if that funding's not there or not found of the appetite. Um, but it does allow us as staff in the meantime to work diligently to find some of that special revenue.
Yes.
So with that in mind, if we go through this process and we get the finished documents and all of the things that are, the, the designs and development and all of these, and we decide, and we find out that like the funding isn't there, how long would this project, the, like, getting it planned? Is that something that you, we could come back to over five years, over ten years? Is it like forever it's available or like, how do you envision that?
Well, council member Greenberg, I, I'd imagine that the, the, the layout won't vary too much because we don't have uh, an excessive amount of space to vary the layout too much. Specifications may change from year to year because regulations might change. Um, I, I think we'd be able to put a plan on a shelf for a period of a few years and then if necessary, dust it off and review the specifications to see. then if necessary, dust it off and review the specifications to see whether they're still compliant with current requirements.
Okay.
Whether there's been any changes in materials that might warrant a change in the specifications and what have you. But, you know, I I you'd you'd have a plan set that would be pretty usable. There might be some tweaks around the edges that might be needed. If you left it there for ten years, well, that's probably a different story.
Right. And and the reason I ask is just, you know, it's not forty million dollars, but one point one five seven, you know, million dollars is a lot of money. So it's like, I don't wanna feel, I I don't want the council to feel compelled if, you know, we are in a situation where we don't have the funding or we don't have the means or we feel like it's gonna be too much on the levy or whatever, that we're compelled because we spent this money. So it sounds to me like there is some flexibility there. It's not unlimited, but there would be a window if it, for whatever reason, I mean, ideally, we would figure it all out and it wouldn't be an issue. But, yeah. Seems reasonable. Thank you.
I think that's very reasonable.
Okay. Thank you.
Wow.
Any other questions?
Uh, no questions, just a few comments and just wanted to pay you back. Um, I appreciate um, Councilman Wagner asking about the foundational piece of how this impacts our community, because I think it is important to know, um, as we're talking about something substantial, like this is really important for us as we continue to talk about things being done, taken care of, but also the health of our community as well, too. Um, I think I appreciate hearing about the sustainability pieces and trying to be cognizant of that because I think we are, as far as a community, really intentional around how that looks, how it's important for us. Um, and yeah, I'm, I appreciate your question, too, around like, what does the long term look like as well, too, if this isn't the direction right now, but something that we should be considering, um, maybe from years down, but also knowing that the infrastructure of the building isn't gonna change, and it contains the deteriorate as well, too, given long term, and there's other implications behind that. So, um, I really appreciate the questions, and just wanted to echo uh, the appreciation for uh, the federal council and the city for um, taking the time to put this together for us and and to sit with this for a little bit, so thank you.
Thanks. Any other comments or questions?
I'll uh, I'll move that we um, authorize the mayor and city manager to engage Oratel architects and consultant partners in a professional services contract for designing construction services associated with the new Robbinsdale Public Works Facility project in accordance with the submitted proposal dated February tenth, twenty twenty five, for a sum not to exceed one million, one hundred fifty seven thousand, nine hundred fifteen dollars. In addition, city council authorizes the inclusion of a topographic and boundary survey for an additional cost not to exceed twenty six thousand, seven hundred ninety dollars. Consideration of including a general geothermal energy system design will be made after further consideration by city council.
Second.
All right. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, all those opposed, no or nay? All right, that motion carries. All right, on to item D under new business. Consider resolution authorizing guidelines for attendance by interactive technology.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor, council. So this was an item council discussed at a work session earlier in the year. Uh, really the impetus, understanding that uh, council uh, may have some travel opportunities uh, related to their professional uh, careers and require them to be uh, out for a meeting or two throughout the year, but still wanting to participate. Uh, state statute went through a variety of updates uh, back in COVID and has since been updated again, but really the opportunity exists since technology can accommodate. Um, but for councils to be able to include this function, uh, you do have to go through the process of approving a resolution. So uh, it was discussed in January, we dialed a few things in at our February discussion. Um, and ultimately, a few of the points that I do want to call out um, for council to approve this resolution include uh, some of the following. Um, councilmember seeking to attend a council meeting uh, using the interactive technology must submit a request to do so in writing to the city manager or city clerk no later than noon on the Thursday prior. Uh, we say this both for uh, record keeping, uh, but also it's not a haphazard that uh, there's a uh, wanna take a long weekend and stay out of town and attend the weekend, we or attend the meeting that way, excuse me. Um, these are for planned events, um, again, that the council has established uh, some time ago. Councilmember's location must be open and accessible to the public. We discussed this uh, in at the February work session. Again, this would be listed as a part of the agenda itself. The councilmember attending through interactive technology must be plenary visible via video. Um, we're working on the tech part of it right now, so uh, the intent would be to be available on the eighteenth of March for the next council meeting. Uh, would be able to use it as soon as then, but again, uh, both via video and then uh, through the CCX broadcast and then uh, rebroadcast, essentially be a part of the uh, the viewership audience. Uh, members uh, of the public must be present at the regular meeting location of the city council. They must be able to hear and see all discussions, testimony and votes uh, from remote participants. So again, that's just kind of saying the same thing, you gotta be able to see each other. Uh, all votes are conducted by roll call, so that's uh, one to call out. Uh, we would essentially do a roll call vote for all items that require one, uh, just so we ensure we have a proper record going forward. Uh, each councilmember may attend uh, meetings by interactive technology, uh, no more than three times per calendar quarter and six times per calendar year. Um, I know that was included in notes, but when I look back uh, to our February discussion, I don't know that we identified, so if that's something that uh, you as a group wanna alter in your policy, you can certainly do that here tonight uh, before you approve. Um, and then again, that limitation doesn't apply to the three situations. Uh, these are really called out in statute, uh, if a councilmember is serving in the military and attending a required drill deployment or on active duty, the councilmember has been advised by a healthcare professional against being in a public place uh, for personal or family medical reasons, or a councilmember is unable to personally attend a council meeting in order to care for a family member. So, uh, again, calling those items out, uh, again, this was a discussion led by council. Um, staff were tinkering with the the tech, but we're just about there. Like I say, should be ready for that, um, but is making recommendations of approval of the attached resolution. Uh, staff would be happy to respond, any questions, comments or concerns?
Any questions from the council?
Hello. Comment, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, one uh, concern that I brought up during the work session was um, based on past experiences as we've moved to teleworking and the challenges that come with hybrid meetings where a meeting is taking place with a majority of people in a room together and then um, perhaps in this case, one or two people attending virtually, and the challenges of running a meeting virtually where everyone else is in uh, a room together. So I wonder if there is a way to incorporate um, uh, an expectation that um, the person who runs the meeting um, be present in in the council chambers, just to avoid um, the the challenges that come with that hybrid, running a meeting in that environment.
So follow up question, um, me being somebody who runs this meeting, does that eliminate the possibility then for me to travel for uh, or related, or is I would just default to yes?
Yes, sorry, I didn't make that clear. Um, I think maybe I did when in the work session. No, no, no. Um, no, that's a good point. I think um, having uh, mayor pro tem or if we adopt this policy for work sessions as well, that um, if the person who is otherwise uh, meant to run the meeting, uh, it's so challenging to have, and for for both the people in the room and the person trying to interact uh, virtually, I think, I just foresee a lot of challenges. Um, so I I feel pretty strongly that uh, the meeting runner, the person running the meeting should be present in the room, and so then uh, in the case where if the mayor is uh, attending virtually, then the mayor pro tem in that case would run the meeting.
Hmm. Yeah, I mean, that seems reasonable. Um, I'm just curious as far as like the technology, I know like when you're, you just have a laptop and a Zoom room, like that definitely happens, like everybody's just sitting in a big conference room, but I feel like our technology is a little more sophisticated. I'm wondering, I don't, like, I know we're still working on the technology, but do you, based on what you know, do you think that that will be an issue or is that? And if it, if not, and we run into the situation where it is, can we update the policy to say that we do need to be in the room? Tim, sorry, just.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor, council, uh, councilmembers. Um, I think what I'm hearing in the handful of questions there, the, if the spirit is to have the uh, presiding officer physically present, um, the, I guess the the that'd be, that's the first question. I think we get accommodate that as a whereas clause, um, saying essentially that, whereas the presiding officer must be physically present at city hall. If that's not the desire of council, um, which I think was the second question, is that, are, do we have the capability to do that? I think we do, and I don't mean to speak for councilmember Parisian, I think the suggestion is there's a bit of a functionality question. Um, so that would be something for you as a council to decide. The the tech is there, I agree that the tech will will be clunky, no matter how advanced we are.
Okay.
Um, but that doesn't mean we can't do it.
Yeah, I'm thinking, I mean, I I run a lot of meetings, um, virtually, I was running one today with a large group of people. I um, I wonder, is there a, is there a specific, like, what's the, what's the concern? More specifically, is it the lack of physical presence, the ability to make eye contact, or is it a noise concern or an ability to hear?
Uh, if I may, thank you. Um, I I think that from past experience, it's not so much um, virtual meetings where everyone is virtual. I think a lot of those concerns um, are kind of evened out amongst the the field of attendees. I think it's when one person um, and the rest of the group is in the room together. Um, I think in terms of meetings and for the public benefit as well, for those who come out to attend, um, I think the the presiding officer being present with the rest of the group, not to say that people attending virtually can't um, equally participate and share insights. I think it's a matter of, um, if we've all been in situations like that where uh, running a meeting uh, with a group of people in another place where you aren't, I imagine there to be a lot of challenges. So the intent behind um, this recommendation is for a smooth meeting for everybody.
Yeah, um, if I may, I again, I mean, you know, this is for everybody else to decide here, too, but, you know, I work in a business where there's two offices and oftentimes we're going back and forth with people sitting in a conference room and somebody else being virtual. Literally just did it today. It's uh, it's never been a problem. I mean, we'd have a hard time operating our business if it was. So um, I respectfully disagree with uh, with your fears, cuz I just, I've not experienced them, but um, I'm but one person, so I'll leave to the council to debate. Yeah?
Mr. Mayor, council, if I might make a suggestion, uh, of course, uh, at the pleasure of the council, um, is staff wrote this out, the the this is based on my understanding, so there's maybe some nuance that I missed. Um, but maybe a way to try this out is to try it out. Uh, maybe we go through it once and if council finds that uh, it was lacking function or any of the concerns discussed um, show themselves, we could bring it back and readdress. Um, you know, again, both in the resolution and the the attachment that we wrote. If I miss something, I certainly apologize. Um, but uh, if we wanna try it out once, uh, and it doesn't work, we can certainly bring it back and we can make adjustments.
I was, I appreciate the um, future of thinking uh, as this conversation is happening. Um, and so, yeah, I I'm agreeing, I think that, yeah, let's, we should give it an opportunity to see. Um, I think that um, Councilperson Parisian, your findings are not incorrect, I think. I think this, it 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 varies. Um, so I think for us to do due diligence, I think it'd be appropriate to try it once, um, see how it goes and then make an adjustment if need be.
Okay. Anybody else? All right. So do we make a motion then to table? I'm sorry.
I'd just like to make a comment, too. Yeah, I I agree with councilmember Parisian, I would have, my preference would be to have the presiding officer here, um, just, I think, from a standpoint of residents showing up and having, um, you know, a person that is guiding them physically, I think, can go a long way. Um, but I um, I also appreciate the other councilmembers wanting to to try it out. My worry with that is that oftentimes when we set these policies, they kind of get set. And um, not saying that that will be the case with this, but that is always a concern I have. So I think I would, I would support um, councilmember Parisian's potential like amendment if there is one, but um, I'll kind of defer to um, the rest of you all.
Yeah, I I guess I don't have a super strong feeling one way or the other. Um, but I have been in a lot of virtual hybrid meetings and, I mean, I guess I understand the component of, you know, you're gonna have people in the public that wanna have someone in person to connect with so that I can see. But I if, I guess I feel like this is gonna be relatively limited, and if it were, if it works and we keep our meetings consi, I guess I just am thinking like from a consistency standpoint, it's like the person that runs the meeting is the mayor and if, like, if someone's not here, then we have the pro tem. So I I don't know, it almost feels like, yeah, I'm I'm maybe a little more up for just like trying it. If it doesn't work, I'm a hundred percent on board, like, this didn't go well and we need to switch the policy and I will uphold that all the way. So um, I guess that's kind of where I fall on it, but it it's not, I I don't necessarily feel super strongly, I think it's like a good suggestion, we definitely should be thinking about it. Um, I'm just sort of curious like how it would go.
Yeah, I um, I mean, again, I I think, I I think it's prudent to make a decision after you know how it's gonna go, before you know, otherwise it feels like a decision and a fear, which could be unfounded or it could be very founded, but either way, we'll know once we try it. You know?
Yeah. Do we need to change the?
Yes, what happens right?
The mo, do we need to change anything in the uh, in the resolution to signify that we're like testing this, or it's like that's just known through this conversation?
Uh, Mr. Mayor, council, no, like any other policy, um, I'd have to look at if the what we're beholden to statute by way of repealing this. Um, so if you wanna approve as is, like any other policy, we certainly can. I I don't know the mechanism or timing, it wouldn't be cumbersome, we'll just, I can't explain it to you off the top of my head.
Okay.
We can certainly repeal. The other thing that I I would like to call out, um, that those uh, just listening to this conversation don't have the benefit of knowing, uh, this council discussed at length and, correct me if I'm wrong, was very supportive in that, um, this is for rare opportunities, this isn't something like a weekly or a a monthly occasion even, that this is something that, what I heard you all in agreement for, this is for very certain circumstances and people need to be out of town but wanna participate selfishly as staff, you know, we appreciate the opportunity for something that's to at least be considered, cuz there are occasions where we may need like a four-fist vote. Um, there's certain zoning or land use pieces that the charter otherwise requires for that, so um, those types of circumstances help us out, uh, if need be, understanding sometimes. But again, the the um, discussion, again, that folks on the, on TV are not hearing, uh, that you had over the last couple of months, was that we want to limit this, as was my understanding, so um, go going forward again, we certainly can repeal, um, if we find that it doesn't work, and um, if, I guess that could include uh, usage of in excess, but that would be a council discussion.
Any other discussion?
I guess I just wanna say thank you, you know, for bringing that up. I mean, it's a really, it's definitely a good point and important to think about as we go into this, cuz if it's a mess and it doesn't work, we... important to think about as we go into this, cuz if it's a mess and it doesn't work, we I think we should all admit, like, okay, we gotta change this and to think about that before we get into it is is definitely a good idea.
Mm-hmm.
Thank you.
So, I'll make a motion to approve a resolution authorizing guidelines for attendance by interne- interactive technology.
Is there a second?
A second.
Okay. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
All opposed, say no or nay?
No.
Motion carries. Okay. Onto other business, uh voucher requests pending approval for dispersments. Any uh comments, questions?
I will move that we approve the dispersment request.
I'll second.
Alright, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no or nay? Okay, who carries? Uh, administrative reports.
Uh, thank you, Mayor, members of the council. Uh, we talked a little bit um about some of these things earlier with the Republic Services being here for the presentation, but I'll just kind of reiterate um and add to it a little bit about the transition to our new waste taller Republic Services. Um, I guess the first thing I just wanna highlight is the communication plan that's upcoming. Um, I know they had mentioned they'll have like a welcome letter on each cart. Um, but from the city side, we'll be sending out postcards next week to every household. Um, that'll include information on like the new carts, removal of their old carts, um sticker program information, um and then collection day changes if there are any. Um, specifically, that'll um be helpful because the recycling is gonna be changing to like an A and B week. Um, so, right now, every resident has the same exact week of recycling, um and now that'll be bi-weekly, so um still every other week recycling, you'll just be on a different type of calendar. Um, and I would like to note that we got that calendar today, uh so we have that posted already up on the FAQ. Um, and that'll go um on the back or on the back of the newsletter that um Republic mentioned earlier, their welcome letter. Um, so we have that up to date. Um, the other form of communication we'll be sending out to every household is the spring slash summer newsletter that goes out. It'll include the same information that the postcard did, if not even a little more. Um, so just another, you know, second round of physical paper in their hands. So residents that, you know, maybe aren't connected on Facebook or get the Burt Town Brief or check social media, um will have that form of communication as well. Um, and then I'd also like to just reiterate our FAQ page. It's got a lot of information on there. It's the most up to date. So when we get information from Republic or from, you know, the transition out of waste management, um all of that information goes on the FAQ as soon as we get it. So, a great resource there. Um, one thing I would like to note is change of collection, um for the day of collection to one group of residents, which would be um like that Regent Place Townhouse, which is in Ward One. Um, it's the group of townhomes and a few other homes that are just like south of Forty Second and um east of one hundred. Uh, right now, there's like a little group of the homes, are those townhomes and homes there that are on a Friday collection and the rest of that area is a Wednesday collection. Um, and so Republic Services just suggested because that route, they're already in there, less traffic and less, you know, on the roads for their trucks. It just makes more sense to adjust that small little area, which is about a hundred and seventy-five households. Um, staff indicated those households and we'll be sending um a separate letter out to each household um outside of any of the other communication, just so they're aware of the change. Um, I also plan to talk to the um Townhouse Association to see if we can have them send out some communication um through their um group, too, just if we can get an extra email out to the people uh that are affected, so um, information on that will also be posted on our website detailing the exact addresses. Um, so people can certainly check that out there, um on top of the letter that will be sent to them. Um, and I think that's all I have from my updates on that change and everything else, so if people have questions, go to the website, or they can also contact me directly and, you know, we've had other staff working on it, too. Like at the front desk, they're pretty knowledgeable as well, so. That's it.
Mr. Mayor, council, a few quick updates from me. Um, uh, two upcoming workshops for the LRT Lowry Station. Uh, that planning discussion, March twenty-fourth in Minneapolis, March twenty-seventh at Elum. Uh, more info is gonna be available uh here shortly. Those just got uh scheduled, but uh Lowry Station planning continues. Um, earlier in the year, council heard about a new program, uh native plant sale. Uh, you guys were supportive of that. That along with the tree sales now uh open, up and running. So, uh jump over to the city website if you're curious about either or both. Uh, we are currently in the process of accepting a variety of applications for summer work, everything from uh little kids' sports to cutting grass to uh the other fun things that you can do for the city in the summertime. Uh, that's how I got my start a hundred years ago and uh those interested, uh it can be a good summer gig. Um, I wanna remind folks, uh I haven't looked out the window, but as snow continues to fall, I assume snow emergency uh goes into effect automatically when two inches accumulates on your street. Uh, and is not, uh or continues, the snow emergency continues until your street's been plowed curb to curb and the snow has stopped. Uh, but just seeing some messaging from the guys that are preparing to go out uh late night, early morning, uh as soon as accumulation uh dictates to do so. Uh, so appreciate folks getting off the street tonight. Um, but segueing into a sign of spring, um registration, all things recreation opened up this week. Uh, that's always a fun time here in City Hall as we start thinking about summertime with the uh everything from the little kids to the adults to the programming to um uh the special events throughout the summer. So, a fun thing to kick off this week. That's all I got.
Excellent. Thank you, Tim. Um, moving on to council general communications. Councilmember Blackledge, I'm sorry, I caught you at a bad moment there.
Okay. No, um, I just wanted to say I had the opportunity to go to the senior commission and I know that they're looking for people to continue to join that commission, so um, as they're out and about, like I said, this please, first Tuesday of every month, check it out. Um, for those who have reached the age of uh opportunity for fifty-five plus, um, check it out. They're doing some great work and trying to do some um revitalization and some ways and ways to support our community, so please check it out if you can. And for those who are celebrating Ramadan, I also just wanted to say appreciation and recognizing that as well to our community and um, yes, thank you.
Councilmember Greenberg?
Um, yeah, I went to the, there was an open house uh last week for Prism, which is a food shelf in Golden Valley, but services our community and other community leaders from um Plymouth and Golden Valley uh county. I mean, there were a lot of people there, but really an amazing facility. Uh, and actually, tonight I went to Cooper High School, had uh the Empty Bowls fundraiser, which is for the near food shelf, which is in Robinsdale. Um, there were a lot of local business sponsors there and it was great to see so many uh of our community out. Uh, you could still donate uh through givemn.org. You just look up uh Empty Bowls, Robinsdale, and you can still donate. Uh, and then also, uh Girl Scout Troop eighteen nine eighty-three will be selling cookies around the area this weekend. Uh, Girl Scout cookies are out there, so um you can find them at Pub Forty-two on Friday, March seventh, from five to eight P M. At Cub and Crystal on Saturday, March eighth, from one thirty to five thirty P M. And Nouvelle in downtown Robinsale on Sunday from two to five thirty P M.
Alright.
Nice.
'Tis the season. Uh, council member, reason.
Thank you. Uh, I would just like to wish everyone a happy International Women's Day this coming weekend on the eighth. Um, Happy Women's History Month, and I want to extend uh my sincere thanks to um members of our Human Rights Commission, especially Courtney, who has coordinated um not only an exhibit, but a wonderful event um coming up before our next council meeting to celebrate and recognize uh the contributions that women have made to Robinsale. So, thanks to Courtney and the Human Rights Commission.
And our very own council member Parisian is featured. So, congratulations.
Thank you.
Councilmember Wagner?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, council. Um, yeah, thank you for all those um great sentiments people shared. I echo all of them. And, yeah, stay safe out there tonight, stay warm. Thank you to Public Works for keeping our streets um safe to be on and our all of that, so that's it. Thanks.
That's all I got. Everything's been said. Thank you. Thank you all. So, uh, meeting adjourned.
I'll move to adjourn.
I'll move to adjourn. Is there?
A motion to adjourn.
A second. Now the meeting is adjourned. All say no or nay? Alright. There you go.
There we go.